Mr. Holden, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Wax, you among you, or at least two of you, are the reason we can't start this meeting. As a result, at 10:33, we can now begin the council meeting.
Do you have a minute?
Yeah, right. Good morning. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Wednesday, September 20, 2000. We are available on Channel 35 and also on council phone. We meet Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday mornings sometime during the morning, allegedly at 10 o'clock, and I believe we are ready to begin. Call the roll, please.
Bernson, Chick, Fear, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Swanich, Wax, Walters, Fararo, 10 members present in the quorum, Madam President.
All right, let's do the housekeeping and then Ms. Goldberg has a presentation.
Approval of the minutes?
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And those two, and the Chair will recognize Ms. Goldberg for a presentation.
We all know that children can learn at a young age to understand and respect different kinds of family structures. As they grow older, this awareness can help lay the foundation for a growing understanding of different groups of people and an ability to take action against prejudice and to try to prevent hate-based violence. That was the concept behind the making of an educational video called "That's a Family." It shows real kids, who in their own words help you understand that their family structure, however different it is from what we think of as the norm, that their family is a real family too and deserves the same recognition and respect of all other families. For example, consider a few of the following statistics about the composition of families in the United States today. Only 28 percent of all American households consists of married parents with biological children. 7 percent consist of married parents with children where a father works outside the home and mother works at home, stays home. So, that's only 7 percent of the families. 1.3 million children are being raised solely by grandparents. More than half of Americans today have been, are, or will be, in one or more step situations of stepfamilies. There are approximately 11.9 million single parents in the United States. Two and a half million people, which is nearly half of all marriages, end in divorce each year. One million children in the United States live with adoptive parents. From 2 to 4 percent of families include an adopted child. The 1990 census showed that 2.3 million interracial and intergroup couples were living in the United States, up from 1.6 million in 1980. And between 6 and 10 million daughters and sons of lesbian, gay, and bisexual parents currently live in the United States. With these statistics, it's clear that there is a huge need for information and resources that can be effectively used with schoolchildren to help explain and open up conversations about family diversity. The clip that you are about to see is from that film, "That's a Family," which is a unique media resource that lets children speak in their own words for the first time to introduce a wide range of family structures, including kids that were adopted, are multiracial, have gay or lesbian parents, have parents who are divorced, or are being raised by a single mom or dad, or by grandparents or guardians. Teachers need support and resources for helping to create respectful climates in the classroom. So now I'd like to see if we could see just a couple of minutes of the film.
This is my family, my mom, my dad, my sister Megan, and me. And in my family, there's my mom, my dad, and my two sisters Monica and Borne.
This is my mom Susan, and I was adopted by her.
This is my family. My parents are divorced.
My two moms are Marilyn and Adrian. My two dads are Michael and Barry.
There's all different kinds of families. There are families with one parent, two parents.
Some relatives.
A foster parent.
Kids who are raised from their aunts, or their uncle, or their grandma, or just one mom, or two moms.
My family is special because we love each other.
They always help me when I need them. They're always caring for me.
My dad's in a wheelchair. But it doesn't really matter because he still loves me and my family still loves me, and that's what a family is all about.
To have a good family, everyone needs to take care of each other and to feel comfortable with each other.
You could feel trust and friendliness, loving to be inside the family.
Having someone to talk to when you're down.
And spend holidays together.
People who love each other, who have happiness together, and who have arguments every now and then. That's a family.
As a former classroom teacher, I can tell you there's probably nothing more important than to help young people understand that families come in different types and varieties, and that's okay. It's just different. I'd like to just to take an opportunity to bring Chris Cook here to come up and to speak for a moment on his project and to tell you that we have for you, Chris, just a happiness is "That's a Family," which says that we recognize that this is a film for kids about family diversity, and it's an important new media project that will help children in elementary schools throughout the United States learn about, celebrate, and respect all different kinds of families. Congratulations on completing your project, Chris.
Thank you, Jackie.
We'll do it. Okay. Chris Cook.
Thank you, Jackie, and thank you to the City Council. We are inspired to have this recognition from the City Council, and we hope it will help continue to lay the groundwork for this film to be seen by thousands of children and their families in the wonderfully diverse community of Los Angeles. We already have the support of school board members, various children and family advocacy commissions, and today to have the City Council's support will help enormously as we continue to reach out to agencies throughout the city that serve children in all different kinds of situations. If we can help children understand about diversity of families, hopefully that will lay the groundwork for all of us to understand and appreciate all kinds of differences and to ultimately take action against prejudice and hate-based violence. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. I will have packets and copies of the film, it's in entirety, in Jackie's office, if you're interested, please, and thanks very much.
Thank you, thanks for your good work. Thank you, Ms. Goldberg, okay. First item.
Before beginning of the regular agenda, Madam President, there are several items to continue. Item number two, applicant consents to continue until November 22.
All right, item two is going to be continued to November 22.
Item number three, Council District 9 has requested that be continued to October 4.
Without objection, that's continued to October 4.
Item number five, request to continue to September 27.
Okay, and we'll continue. Item number five, no objection, that will be continued to September 27.
Item number...
Let's do some more while we're at it.
Item 34, Councilmember Pacheco's office is requesting that be continued to October 11.
All right, item 34 is continued to October 11.
Item 40A, a closed session item, the City Attorney has requested that be continued to, for one week, to September 27.
All right, 40A is continued, but the rest of them are still with us.
Item 41, a request to continue to October 20.
Okay, item 41 to October 20.
Items 44 and 45, applicant consents to continue until September 27.
Okay, 44 and 45 to September 27.
Item 57, Housing Department is requesting that be continued to October 20.
Okay, that's continued.
Excuse me, item number 58, a request from Housing to continue to November 21.
All right, we'll continue that to November 21, so the record here is to November 22. Okay, keep going, some more.
Item 62Y is a special event motion, and Council District 3 has requested that be received and filed.
All right, item 62Y, out of that long list, will be received and filed, the rest of it is still with us.
And the next item, Madam President, you have confirmation of city official, item number 12, Alvin Rosenbloom to Board of Animal Regulation Commission.
All right, Mr. Rosenbloom, are you here? Yeah, you are here, okay. Have a chair, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the Council, Mr. Rosenbloom, I basically, I just want you to understand, you might not, but I have to explain it, and it's kind of a position I've taken. One, I'll be voting no on this appointment, and it has nothing to do with Mr. Rosenbloom. It has to do with geographic representation in the city of Los Angeles and the fact that most members who are being recommended to commission appointments continue to be from a particular area. And I think that the city has a wealth of people that can participate in commissions, and the only reason I'm making the statement, Mr. Rosenbloom, is out of respect, because I need you to understand that it has nothing to do with you as an individual, it has to do with the position I'm taking as a council member, trying to get, hopefully, the mayor's office and the rest of my colleagues to really understand the importance of diversity and geographic representation in the city.
Anybody else? Open the roll on item 12, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, two noes.
All right, that you are confirmed. Thank you for your service and welcome aboard. And forthwith on that. Okay, next item.
On the regular agenda, item number one is a public hearing item. You have a card and also a request from Councilmember Ridley Thomas's office to hold that.
Well, I have a bunch of cards, and as it's a, as we do have cards, we're going to call it special and move on. One. When we get there, let's go through the agenda and see if we can get that far.
Item number four is a public hearing item. Also, there's an ordinance on the files you wish to hold that until we have 12 members.
Are we going to have 12 members?
Yes, when Mr. Ridley Thomas...
I guess when Mr. Ridley Thomas gets here, we will. Okay, let's hold all the ordinances.
Okay, item number six is a continued public hearing item, it's a building and safety assessment confirmation.
All right, is there anyone wishing to be heard on item six? I don't have any cards, but I do see somebody walking toward the front, so would someone go and give the gentleman a card? All right, while we're taking care of the housekeeping here, item 30 is going to be continued till September 27. Okay, speak first, we'll get the card later, but before you leave, can, we need, just to have you fill out a name and address. This is on item six.
Member of the City Council, my name is Kenneth Walker, and this is Dwight Harris. We're here for Dr. Porte concerning, WR Porte concerning a piece of vacant property at 1628 South Sycamore.
Pull the microphone closer to your mouth, it moves, you don't have to, just pull the thing closer so we can hear, thank you.
Yes, okay, thank you. Again, my name is Kenneth Walker, and I'm here as a representative for Dr. WR Porte in regards to a piece of vacant property at 1628 South Sycamore. This is Dwight Harris, who has some information that you should hear at this time.
Thank you, Kenneth Walker. Good morning, members of the City Council. I'm here as agent for the owner of the property at 1628 Sycamore. Item number six on your agenda, I'm here to object to the assessments that were levered against that property, and the reason being because what the city said they contract out to do, they did not do it. They, in other words, they did not complete all of what they said they had did. First of all, they held down that they placed a fence around the property to keep trash and debris and lottering out. I'm here to say that there was a fence already around the property. The fence extended from both sides of the property to the center of the driveway. The front part of the property was not fenced off. The city came in and put an eight-foot fence on the front part of the property. The property gate at the house was locked. Apparently, someone kept breaking in the gate to get in the backyard, but it was locked. Upon the city assessments, they came and put additional fence in the front. The city also said that they cleaned the yard, the debris, the trash, from the interior of the property and the exterior of the property. I pulled a permit for the property, I don't know if anyone has the information that I have, I turned it in room, the sixth floor, when I first came, but on the fifth, on the fifth of May, May 16th, I pulled a building permit to get permission from the building department to go into the property, because they had gated it up in the front, put a lock on it. Upon paying the necessities and the fees to get in there, I then noticed that it was excessive amount of debris, trash, vegetation, rubbish, inside and outside the property, which the city said they had cleaned up. I was ordered by the Building and Safety Department to comply with this abated order. In other words, they told me, since you pulled a permit, you are responsible. I then took the necessity to go into the property and have it cleaned up, inside and out. Also, there was a chimney that was, had fell over because of the earthquake, I also had that repaired. As far as the property being boarded up, there was not necessary for the property to be boarded up. The city did more damaging and boarding up the property than they did before the property was boarded up. In other words, the windows were all sealed, it has French windows on the front, they were all, had glass in it. The city came in, broke the glass, they put four-by-eight, three-inch plywood, well, in other words, three-eighths plywood, which is heavy plywood, and they bolted two-by-fours on the inside. In other words, they destroyed the French windows, broke the glass, destroyed the bedroom windows. Upon entering the property on May 16th with the building inspector, Dan Ray, I asked him concerning this. I asked him, why was this property and the windows destroyed like this? He said...
Let me interrupt you just for one second, because this is a matter in Mr. Holden's district, and I just want to ask Mr. Holden whether he wants to hold this over and try to resolve it, or whether we, you want to keep going, in which case I'm going to let the gentleman finish.
Well, I think that, I'm hearing this for the first time, and I think you've said enough to cause me to want to have a more inquiry into...
Okay, so let's continue this item, we won't act on it today.
Let's continue it for a couple of weeks, and during that time, Madam President, I'll have my staff...
We'll refer it to your office.
Yeah, we have my staff go out...
Okay, so...
With the department, check your complaints.
Okay, so what we're going to do then...
Now, if you're responsible, you'll be responsible.
Okay. What we're going to do then is continue, the council will take no action today, we'll continue the item for two weeks, and in between, we'll refer to Mr. Holden's office, and you and he can see if you can resolve this.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you, City Council.
All right, so item one is referred to Mr. Holden's office, and we'll be back here in two weeks, which is October 4. It wasn't one, you're quite right, it's six. I've got item one in my hand here, okay, that was item six. What else have we got here?
Next items, items for which public hearings have been held, items seven through 11. Item seven is an ordinance, you wish to hold that?
Hold seven, and, yeah, and the others.
So, items eight through 11.
All right, members of the council, do we have any specials, eight through 11?
Madam Chair, I raise on item eight, I don't want to call it special, but I needed the clerk of the city to be aware that it's the Community Economic Development Committee that oversees the Convention Center, LA Convention Visitors Bureau, and for some reason, they referred this item to budget and finance. When I reviewed the item, I didn't have any problems with it, but I do want the clerk to understand the committee's role and which committee oversees the convention bureau as well as the Convention Center.
Okay, thank you. Any specials, eight through 11. Seeing none, open the roll on eight through 11, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Okay, next item, there's a bunch of ordinances.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 12, excuse me, 13 through 39. You have ordinances on 15 and, excuse me, 13 through 15.
14 and 15, I have, all right, I have cards only on item 26, so we'll call 26 special. And we'll hold the ordinances, which means we could vote on items 16 through...
39.
39, with the exception of 26, which is called special.
And 30...
30 was continued, and 34 was continued. Any specials on any of the, any of the others? 22 is called special by Ms. Chick. Anybody else? Any other specials? All right, open the roll on 16 through 39, with the exception of 22, 26, 30, and 34. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved.
Madam Chair, on item 37?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Could we hold that special, because I want to talk about it before we take action?
Okay, we'll deem that reconsidered unless there's an objection and called special by Mr. Hernandez. Item 37. Okay, moving what, which one? Fourth with on 38. Okay, next item.
Next items, items 42 and 43 are public hearing items. Council should open the hearing and continue the hearing and ordinance to October 10.
All right, I'm going to open those hearings, but since I don't have any cards on either of them, we are then going to continue the hearings and the ordinance to October 10. Those are now continued.
Next items, Madam President, items 46 through 54.
54, yeah, you did say it, I just got lost here. Any specials, items 46 through 54, members of the council? Good. In that case, open the roll on items 46 through 54. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next.
Next items on the continued agenda, items for which public hearings have not been held, items 55 through 72.
All right, except we've continued 57 and 58 and 62. Why?
And also, there's a, an amending motion on item 62 double B. It's a motion by Councilmember Hernandez. It's a special event motion.
Okay, let's, all right. 61 is called special by Mr. Wax. Ms. Goldberg, which one did you want?
I want 67 special for a question and on 59, I'd like to continue that for 10 days.
Okay. Item 59 is, that's in your dis, that's your...
67.
I can't turn pages that fast. 59, yes. All right, item 59 will be continued, is that 10 days, more or less? Okay, October 3rd, how's that?
Thank you very much.
Okay, 59 is continued, 61 is called special, 67 is called special, and 69 is called special. Okay, open the roll on the balance of those. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Fourth with on item 70, please.
Fourth with on item 70 and 52. Anybody else? Okay, next item. Hold the closed sessions.
Items 74 and 75 are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Okay, I do not have cards on those either, so we're going to open the public hearing and close the public hearing. Items 74 and 75, any specials? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. All right, now what? No, we're not, unfortunately, that was the end of the roll.
Items 1 and 2, 4 both have ordinances. The next item would be item number 22, called special by Councilmember Chick.
22, all right. Item 22, Ms. Chick, press the speaker button, please. Thank you.
I called this special out of concern, colleagues, that the Housing Department is placing a property in my district into the REAP program, which I am going to support. However, it seems to me counterproductive and less than effective for the department not to be in contact with the council office. And I first learned of this and so did my district office and City Hall staff, looking at the agenda today. But I think that council staff and council members can play a significant role working with landlords of problem properties in their district, and it's certainly something that I've done in the past, both through visits of my staff and letters from me, and I want to work with the department as well. So I don't know if someone is here from the Housing Department to come to the table and explain what the normal process is, how council offices are notified. If not, then I'm going to ask for this to be held over until Friday so that someone from the department can join the discussion. So you understand it's not, I'm not asking questions about the particular project, but the process by which the department works with council offices before the property goes into REAP?
Normally, the department does in fact contact the council offices. In this case, I have a communique that we sent to Mad Armenta regarding this property.
What date?
It was yesterday.
Okay, that, that's not what I'm looking for, though. I think you understand that.
Well, what we can do is give much more advance notice.
Well, yeah, I would, I'd like to have someone who is, or the general manager of the department, I think, is, would do, to talk to me and then perhaps we'll circulate something to all council members, how we're going to change this. Finding out the day before, that's, that's not the issue.
Okay.
It's giving us advance notice and looking to partner with us to prevent properties from sinking into this state of affairs that we have to put it into the REAP program and in some cases, we can be helpful.
Okay, I can communicate that to Mr. Gary Pen.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And we can go forward with this. Thank you.
All right, so, so you want to vote now on?
This property is a problem and it needs to go into REAP, but I'm just sorry that we couldn't participate in doing preventative work in advance.
Okay, open the roll on item 22.
Madam Chair, I have nothing.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're quite right. There you are. Mr. Hernandez, don't open the roll yet.
Could I ask, when did Housing first get a complaint about this property?
The initial order was written about a year ago.
About a year ago? And when did you hold your hearing and your meetings and so forth?
There's been a number of hearings and appeals that have been ongoing, so...
And, okay, I just want to ask that question. Members of the council, in regards to the REAP program, I think there, Ms. Goldberg and I, we were just chatting because I had two items continued that were being asked to be removed from REAP, but my staff is now going out and checking each one of these properties and they felt, in this case, they shouldn't be removed. Ms. Goldberg was sharing with me the same kind of story. We're having a meeting with the Housing Department tomorrow, I think, at 1:30 or something like that, to discuss the whole process of REAP. I'm finding my staff has to go out to verify situations and I appreciate the work the Housing Department's doing, but I think there's some fundamental administrative process that is lacking. And you were inviting members to participate, or you were going to send out a memo, but you're welcome also to participate with us. We started dealing with a question of notification early on, but now I'm finding that I got to make sure my staff's going out there. And it's, it's a question of looking at the issue from both sides, the landlord's side as well as the tenant's side, and I have had instances where we prevented him from going into REAP because we got the landlord to do the improvements beforehand. In other cases, that's not possible and you got to put him into REAP, but for some reason, there has to be a closer scrutiny of the program because we're finding things that don't match. And so that meeting, I think, is happening at my office and you're welcome to send a representative.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're now ready to vote. Open the roll on item 22, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's approved. You need fourth with on that one? Fourth with. Okay, next item.
Item number 26 called special, there's a card from the public on the item.
There is indeed. Item number 26, Mr. Marticich.
Andrew Marticich, Harbor Study Foundation. I just wanted to bring to the attention of the City Council that the Harbor Study Foundation represents 25% of the registered voters in the Harbor area. And when it comes to the process of the study, we're a party in real interest along with the city. So we are equals in this process. And I don't think the city quite understands the process and who and what we are and how we should interact. I'd like to just give note the fact that we did send a request for proposal out to the Los Angeles Police Department as well as the sheriffs in the Long Beach Police Department for feasibility proposals so we can evaluate and correlate it with the data that's returned and given to us from LAFCO. We also, as the petitioner for the Harbor area, were required under California code to file with the State Lands Commission. On July the 19th, we were requested to submit a formal written request for data from the Harbor Department, and it wasn't until September the 11th that we received a written response. It was a cover letter, a public relations map dated 1994, and a Meads and Bounds description dated 1993. And the cover letter indicated that the map nor the legal description was accurate and if we would like, we could wait till later on in the year to receive a map, which is data that is exclusive to the city of Los Angeles and was denied. After reviewing the contents on September the 11th, I, as a representative of the Harbor area, went to the Harbor Commission and demanded access of the four commissioners and the two top officials of the Harbor Department. I was denied access. Through improvisation and backdoor data gathering, we were able today to submit to the State Lands Commission as well as to LAFCO so we can proceed under code. I can express the outrage that we feel towards the treatment that the 14,000 registered voters received who are looking to do a fair study of this issue. We compliment Mr. Hernan, Councilman Hernandez on his issue of diversity for representation at the Harbor Commission, also for Mr. Wax, Councilman Wax's position where three local residents should be on the commission whereby city charter only one needs to be. The issue of diversity even leads to look further into the fact that of the four top officials in the Harbor Department, they are not even residents of the city of Los There's a reason why the Harbor is upset with what's going on, a definite reason. We've sent signals and signals and it seems the community, the City Council is in denial. I, other than the fact that we're moving forward with the process, we don't know if the City Council will even address the issue, that the day will come where they will have to talk to the applicants to work out the issues or follow the course of stonewalling. Thank you.
But Andy, you are in support of this item today?
I am supportive. It's just a general comment to inform the council of, of what is happening and what is not happening and what the council should take as a position, not, not only on legal grounds, but on moral grounds.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any council member that would like to speak on item number 26? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on this item and tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
That item is approved, fourth with. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item 37 called special by Councilmember Hernandez.
Item number 37, Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I need us all, excuse me, here. I need us all to, to hear this statement. I know Councilmember Mark Ridley Thomas is not present, but Dora is, and I just want us to be aware of what item 37 is asking. I was asking for a moratorium on basically the request for spending a block grant on special projects. But what I'm going to ask is that we send this motion to my committee. When we talk about a timeliness report and a block grant dollar figure that has not been spent and that has to be spent because the federal government's asking us to, we've been going through a process of identifying funding that is available because we're not spending it and then assigning it to projects. For lack of better terms, what I have found is this rash of motions from my colleagues asking for monies to be spent in their districts on projects. And I'm trying to identify how much money we got to spend and where to spend it at. Part of what I'm trying to respect is the fact that a lot of this money was already dedicated in a particular council district and that we could use money from that district to basically move it from a project that's not moving to a project that could be moved. I think that was important. At the same time, for example, we just had a motion that we did where we spent about $4 million of block grant to make sure Prop K and Prop A projects moved. And what you need to know is that took up pretty much all the money we had identified and I still had projects coming in. So the intent of the moratorium is to allow us to identify more money that's not moving so that we can put it into the pot to move some of these projects that my colleagues are requesting. In the middle of that is the Healthy Neighborhoods Program the mayor's introduced. We have additional Prop K and Prop A monies that can be moved right away in recreation centers, childcare facilities, and, and individual projects. So the intent of the motion requesting a moratorium was to make us all aware that we have to identify more money and put it into the pot. Now, we know that approximately anywhere from $60 to $100 million has not been spent. It's just that it hasn't been forthcoming. It's not like CRA and Housing and everybody else is saying, here's our money. And, and so we have to really go through a process of identifying funds in order to fulfill the requests of the members as well as the mayor's office as well as other issues. And so I want this motion in terms of the moratorium to be sent to committee so that we could, again, continue looking for monies and I could give you a much more detailed report. I just wanted you all to be aware that it's not like we already identified the money, that we got $60 million we have to spend. We know that that kind of money exists that cannot be spent. The problem is, it hasn't been forthcoming by other departments and we have to continue to shake the tree. And then I have plenty of projects to assign it to, but the rule is, projects that are ready to move today, that you can spend it at. And that, I just kind of want to explain the purpose of the motion. It's going to committee. I'm not asking that you vote today for a moratorium, but I'm asking you to be aware that right now, I have much more requests than I have money with an understanding there's a lot more money, I just haven't been able to shake it loose yet.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Walters.
That's all right, he answered my question.
Okay. Is there any other council colleague that would like to speak on this item? Mr. Hernandez has requested that this item be referred to his committee.
See you.
Okay. Any objection to that request? Seeing none, that will be the order. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item number 62 called special by Councilmember Wax.
Mr. Wax, item number 62 called special by you. 61.
Yes, I really just wanted to know why the city attorney needs another $700,000 for another outside legal counsel. And who are the legal counsel? How much have we been spending and why the additional $700,000?
Mr. Marr is coming to the table. Explain.
Mr. Marr, if you wouldn't mind answering that question for Mr. Wax, we would appreciate it.
This is my for the city attorney's office. I'm joined by Angel Monzano, who's managing these and also leading...
Can't hear, you have to talk into the microphone.
I think the microphone's off. Is it on now? Okay, thank you. I got it, thank you. With respect to your questions, this is the Tipton-Wittingham representation and specifically, it's Greg Bergman and his law firm that are representing you. That was...
What's the law firm?
Greg Bergman, Bergman &amp; Wedner, it's a law firm. That law firm was first hired, I believe, as a result of a, of a report that was approved by this council on October 8th, 1997. They have been continuously performing work on that case, or at least on portions of that case, since that time. The total amount expended in that matter so far for the Bergman-Wedner firm is $903,358.39. We also have accrued $251,721.93 in unpaid billings.
And is this $700,000 additional?
This $700,000 would be intended to pay the unpaid billings and also, or is intended to last through approximately next spring.
So that would get us to $1,606,000?
Yes, it would.
And why do we have to spend $1,606,000 on an outside law firm for this? And how much is it going to keep on spending? And why don't you, can't the city attorney's office do it with all your own staff?
What we, well, let me start by saying that with respect to this appropriation, we're asking it for it to be out of the $3 million budget that you gave us for outside counsel for this fiscal year. We have not yet asked for an appropriation out of that budget.
Outside counsel, not just for this case, for all the cases?
That's correct. And this was one of the two primary cases that we dealt with when we asked for that appropriation that I know of, at least out of my division, the other one being Groveson, which you heard last week. Now, with respect to why we have the Bergman-Wedner firm on this, this was, began as a very complex class action brought by women in the Los Angeles Police Department, a putative class action. In other words, it was not certified. The Bergman firm was instrumental in formulating with the Los Angeles Police Department a plan for addressing affirmative action. This was all prior to the police division. Now, when, the reasons for doing this, I believe in 1997, is your council saw a need for additional employment law resources for the city's defense at that time. You subsequently gave us additional... You subsequently gave us additional resources when you implemented the police division in January 1999. Since that time, we have not asked for additional resources for any additional case in employment law. We've managed it all inside. We've also managed to take back approximately half of the workload that would previously have been given to Bergman &amp; Wagner. What happened was that after the deadline for the class certification passed and the plaintiffs didn't seek the class certification, probably in light of the work that was done by the department on its affirmative action plan, there have been individual actions filed. Five were left with Bergman &amp; Wagner because they had already worked on those cases because of the facts. Nine were taken back by the city attorney's office. We've settled two. Four have been dismissed by the, by the plaintiffs, leaving three to be litigated by our office. So I believe we're managing this effectively even though the price tag obviously for outside counsel is quite high and will be high during the coming months in light of the litigation. Should indicate the importance of this also is in proportion to the attorney fee award. Last, two weeks ago, I believe, we brought you a $2.6 million demand by these plaintiffs. Judge Hatter has awarded $1.7 million in attorney fees. So in proportion to the city's risks, the attorney fees are, are certainly not disproportionate to the, to the potential in this litigation.
Well, no, but 1.7 million to the other side.
That's right.
Yeah, well, I'd hope that if we spent 1.7 million here, we would have been able to avoid 1.7 million there. In the end, we're going to spend $3.5 million in legal fees.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg.
How much, this will take us to 1.6 in outside counsel. How much do we think we've spent internally, if you know what I mean?
You know, we don't bill our city attorney time, but it's been a great amount of time, not only in our internal attorneys but also police department time in managing this issue.
Right, enormous.
It's, it's been very expensive.
And are we at all involved in settlement talks?
We have, as you know, we brought you a settlement proposal by the, by the plaintiffs approximately, I think it's been almost a year ago, which was viewed as excessive. There is mediation coming up in October on the, on the case which is scheduled for January of 2001. I expect that at that time, the parties will once again consider settling that individual case. And as I mentioned, the city attorney's office has settled two other individual cases in this list of 14 cases that, that will remain from the Tipton plaintiffs.
Well, I would urge that we maybe try to take some of this $700,000 we're appropriating and get proactive about looking down the road and seeing if we can settle more than just them as they come up because otherwise what we're ending up with is even if you win, you lose.
And I think that if you want further briefing and, and terms of the settlement potential, we probably should go into closed session to brief them down.
I think we prob, maybe not today because we've got quite a number, but I do think, Mr. President, we ought to, to have some kind of closed session update on this because it's been about a year and there are 14 cases and we've, we're working on, we've done two or three, haven't we, settled, did you say?
We've settled, we've, we've settled two cases that are in the list of 14. Four of them have been dismissed, leaving a total, I think, of eight remaining cases, one of which is going to be.
Well, with eight remaining cases to allocate $700,000 in attorney's fees for the eight remaining cases, seems to me like we ought to be able to do it for less than that and come to some settlement.
We'd be glad to bring a council report and ask, you know, consider this in closed session.
Okay, I would request that because, you know, our goal is not to enrich external attorneys.
We would appreciate if the city attorney's office at its earliest opportunity could come back at the councilwoman's request and give us a report in closed session on, on the items that were brought to our attention.
We'll file a report by the end of the week.
Thank you. Is there any other council member that would like to speak on item number 61? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
Nine ayes, one no.
That item is approved. Next item.
Could I have that forthwith too?
Forthwith on that item. Next.
Next item, Mr. President, item 62BB. It's a special event motion. There's a substitute motion on the desk by Councilmember Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez, has been circulated?
Yes, it has, and the event has already happened. We're just providing an additional instruction for it because of.
Okay.
The street sweeping swept before the parade and I appreciated that and I thought they should be compensated for the time.
Okay. We do have this item as amended. Is there any objections to the amendment? Seeing none, the item is before us. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
That item is approved forthwith on that item. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Uh, next item, item number 67 called special by Councilmember Goldberg.
Councilwoman Goldberg, item number 67, I believe.
Yes, most of my questions have been answered. I just wanted to raise the fact that there is going on right now, this campaign, to educate the public about the proper use of 911. My concern was is I haven't seen hide nor hair of it. And here we're gonna, we've been spending money and now we're going to be spending more money and I just wondered if any of you have seen any campaign to educate the public because, you know, it, maybe we didn't put enough money into it. I'm, I'm not arguing the merits of it now and I don't really want to, but I, before we put another $400,000 in, I just wanted to find out some information. I got some information and it, it's very expensive to try to educate a population this size, but I think it's very important that we do so. And I've been a little concerned that other than the opening of the campaign in August, which I did see a blurb about in the paper, I haven't really seen it since then.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Fuhr.
Why don't we get our friends from the police department to come forward? Who's here on this item?
Hi. Yeah, no, they're here. Because the, my understanding is that the actual rolling out of billboards, MTA bus ads and so forth is happening right now so that we wouldn't have seen prior action. Colleagues, as we all know, this is meant to be an interim step toward fulfilling a vision that many of us have to create a 311 non-emergency phone number in this city to offer the dual benefits of siphoning phone calls from 911 that aren't emergency calls, thereby enabling people to get through to 911 when they do have emergencies. And secondly, to create easy access to all city non-emergency services with an easy three-digit phone number. We're not there yet. We are moving forward to fulfill that goal, but it's going to take us a number of years to actually have a fully up and running 311 system. In the meantime, for purposes of assuring that our 911 system works best, we have this Ask LAPD phone number. So why don't you share with us the, the situation when it comes to the outreach efforts, the advertising, and why we haven't seen it so far, but we're about to see?
Yes, sir. At the moment, we have several items going on. We have, the kickoff campaign was August the 23rd. We waited till after the DNC to do the kickoff so that we didn't have the competition with advertising. On August 21st, radio advertising started. It's, they're trailers with traffic reports from 6:00 to 9:00 in the morning and 4:00 to 7:00 in the afternoon during peak hours as they give metro traffic reports and updates. We have the advertisement on each one of those. We are getting about 31 advertisements per day during the rush hour traffic. On September 11th, billboards went up and they are 180 billboards, five by 11 in neighborhoods across the city. Sorry. Yeah, there are 180 billboards. They're five by 11, community billboards spread throughout the city. They went up September the 11th. And on September the 7th, we began transit advertising and that's 1,500 posters put in to buses on selected bus lines through MTA throughout the city. And we are also working on various items. We've had interviews on radio. We did the KZLA Sunday Show last Sunday. We have Channel 2 coming out to do a feature on us next week, which is going to be a four-minute primetime feature by, I believe it's Jonathan Elias, will be doing it with us. We've had a lot of favorable response from the press and the media and newspapers. We're looking at a community partnerships program. We've managed through this program to virtually double our radio time. We could afford to pay for only four weeks. We've expanded it to a little over seven weeks now through donations from corporations like Metro Networks, KFC, AT&amp;T, things like that. And we're also working at continued partnerships for the future to get into the posters. We'll be seeing those come up within the next month at community centers, libraries, all businesses throughout the city. We're putting out roughly 50,000 posters around the city. We're getting 700,000 magnets. We're partnering with businesses who will be supporting and sponsoring, a lot more collaterals to go out. We are just beginning the program. We're about two weeks into it and I do agree, I haven't seen a lot myself. I must not listen to the right radio channels, but it is there. We have received the deliverables. The contractor has done roughly $200,000 worth of this contract to date. The money we're asking for basically was approved last year but just by mistake was not appropriated. This isn't additional money that we're asking for. This is merely to fund what we've already contracted to do, so.
Thank you, Mr. Fuhr. Thank you, Lieutenant. Chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
I, I have two areas that I wanted to ask some questions. How long has it been operating?
The number itself has been up since July of 99, but the public relations program only started August 23rd this year.
Right. Now, if I speak Spanish only and I dial the number, what happens?
Okay, well, the, the number has an IVR that is Spanish and TDD. When you dial that number, if you get communications, you, there are Spanish operators that will answer the number.
Okay. How do I find out about it if I speak Spanish only?
We have half, approximately half of the billboards are in Spanish, as are the bus posters in all of the buses. All of our posters, billboards, and advertising material is in both English and Spanish.
Okay, that's one, that's one of your questions and now continue to monitor that part of it, but so La Pino's part of the advertising campaign and Channel 52 and 34 and radio station and so forth. I think that they'll be more than willing to participate, just we've got to make sure they're part of it. The other question I had, because I did receive a couple of calls from constituents who tried the line and there were complaints. Now, my question is, how do we monitor the service of the line? How many calls have you received and what's been the result?
Okay, we are keeping statistics through our computer-aided dispatch center. We have a, what we call the, the automatic call distributor. It produces statistics for us so we know how many calls we had. When we started last July, we, we got about 19,000 calls to that number. July of this year, we were up to close to 40,000 calls. We, we have also, it has been growing, in fact, since April, it's growing almost 4,000 calls per month. We're, we're beginning to see there's some momentum here.
And is it reducing the number of calls to 911?
It's hard to, to say that. Our calls this year in general are up 26%. The total number of calls to the CDC, we're up almost half a million calls. However, on the positive side, the calls to 911 are only up 17%, whereas the non-emergency calls are up 38%. So we believe we are seeing some impact. If it weren't for the fact that we're half a million calls ahead, we would probably be seeing better impact.
Okay. Just a tremendous disseminator of information that might help on both those modes would be if we worked through a unified school district and having them disseminate information through their student body to their parents.
Yes, sir. We're, our 911 education unit, the Communications Division, visits schools regularly. They do about five school meetings a month.
Right.
And we are distributing all of this through the school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Again, thank you, Lieutenant. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing no other colleagues that wish to speak, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on this item and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
That item is approved forthwith. Next item.
Uh, Mr. President, you still have ordinances on the desk. However, there won't be 12 members present today. Do you wish to vote on the reports, adopt the reports and have the ordinances go over second reading next week?
Is there any objection, colleagues, for doing that? Okay, seeing no objection, why don't we do that? So what ordinances?
Items 4, 7, 13, 14, and 15.
Hey, colleagues, 4, 7, 13, 14, and 15 are now before us. Is there any colleague that wishes to speak on any of those items? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on first reading ordinances and We have a delay of the game penalty here on the clerk.
Ten ayes.
There we go. Okay. All right, those items are continued one week. They'll go over one week for a second reading. That's correct. Okay?
Next item, Mr. President, item number one is still on the desk. It's a nuisance abatement appeal, public hearing.
Okay. Mr. Ridley-Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, I simply want to encourage the adoption of the PUM committee report, which is to deny the appeal. This has been a longstanding problem in CD8. Regrettably, after having afforded this particular recycling center a number of opportunities to effectively clean up its act, the report indicates that there are 13, 15 conditions and the majority of those conditions have been consistently violated. Therefore, there's nothing left to do but to give this community the relief that it needs, it deserves, and that it essentially demands by moving forward and revoking this conditional use permit and essentially causing this operation to be closed and to find a more suitable place to take up business should they deem it appropriate. I want to say further that one of the recommendations, as you'll see on the agenda, is to request that the planning department, the building and safety department, as well as the council office assist in helping the operator or the owner find another place to do business. It should be explicitly stated that that is a request, it is non-binding, and should the owner seek such assistance, those suggested entities can in fact offer the assistance that he may be requesting to the extent that it is within their capacity to do so. With that, Mr. President, I would move the adoption of the report as it comes to us from the Planning and Land Use Management Committee.
Mr. Ridley-Thomas, we do have four cards. Would you like to move a five-minute hearing?
So move, sir.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez, you are the next speaker. Would, would you care that we ask for the public comment first and we'll recognize you? Okay. We do have four speakers on this item. I will call them all at once and if you could please line up behind the podium there, it would be appreciated. We are going to have a five-minute public hearing. Franco, is it Yasso? Alice Henderson, Blanche Brown, and Rosie, and it's either Dilson and Pielson Nelson, is it? Are those folks still here? Franco Yasso, Alice Henderson, Blanche Brown, and Rosie Nelson. If you folks could please come forward and right here at the podium in the center, and then if you would just state your name for the record, and then we are going to have a, a five-minute hearing on this. And whoever would like to go first, go right ahead and then just say your name.
Good morning, Alice Henderson.
Thank you, ma'am.
The problem is, and I think if any of you, just think about it, we do not need recycling within the neighborhood. Our properties are vandalized continuously. A gentleman, one of my neighbors, was in a violent argument and fight the other night trying to avoid someone taking the cans out of his yard. I had a problem where I decided the cans and bottles should be in the trunk of my car. It was the only safe place. We stopped someone from getting in the trunk one night. The next morning, the dog had alerted us. The next morning woke up, broken car window and a dead dog. Things are continually going on like that.
Are dead.
Where they're located, where they're located to the north, south, east, and west is nothing but single-family residents and a few apartment buildings. It does not need to be in that area.
My name is Blanche Brown. I represent the 98th Street Block Club. I do oppose having this recycling center within our residential area.
My name is Rosie Nelson. The recycle center, I have nothing against the man that collects recycling centers, the people that goes in your trash can, they come up on your property, they'll take your flowers. You can ask them not to come in your yard, you haven't said anything to them. You lock the gate, they're shaking, they're pulling on your gate. They just completely resent anything that you say to them about coming up on your property. They'll take your trash, they'll dump it all out on sidewalks, you have to take the broom, the shovel, to go back, to pick it up, to clean it. It's a complete nuisance.
My name is Franco Yasso. I'm here representing Roberto Bernal, owner of Roberto Recycling, that is operated by him and his family. He paid all the fees that the city required and filed the 15 items. We comply with all of them except that the. We comply with all of them except that the city says we don't comply. We submit the appeal in the item number three. They said we buy other materials, and we answer, we only collect plastic, glass, aluminum cans. Sometimes the public try to sell other materials like batteries or screens. This is because they don't read the ads that we only buy materials CRV and no other materials. Condition number five, this condition requires that all recycling material be maintained in closed cover, these receptacles designed for that purpose, except when materials are actually being deposited. And we answer condition number five. Normally, we have covered these receptacles, but in some occasions, the company don't send covered receptacle on time. In addition to this problem, we put the materials on barrels while the materials are selected and weighed. Item number six, the condition requires that the sorting of cans and bottles should not result in noise from the breaking and crushing the bottles of cans. And we answer number six, we try to reduce this noise, but sometimes the noise comes when we put the materials in the containers for a moment. We are thinking put the materials with more carefully. Item number eight, the condition provide that there should not be open outdoor sales in any kind of premises on the premises. We answer number eight, we don't allow any person to sell products around or inside the property. In the first hearing, we determined any seller has permit to sell merchandise in this place, and we are not remain the same determination. Item number nine, the condition requires that the operator of the recycling center keep the premises and the adjacent sidewalk area clean and fill the glass and debris by sweeping and washing the area at least twice a day. Condition number nine, we answer, the premises has been cleaned after the first hearing, but in the second hearing, other residents that not assist to the first hearing repeat the same problem because they don't listen that we will take care of this problem. Item number eleven, the condition limit to hours operation for the recycling center, the hours to be maintained were nine to six daily. We answer, we are open the site sometimes early only for to clean the site, but in not to open to the public. The site has a sign that indicate that recycling open from nine to six p.m.
Thank you, sir, very much. We appreciate it. Chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
Members of the council, I kind of rise because I had some difficulty with this particular case. First, so that everybody understands, it's on the corner of Hoover and Century Boulevard. At the same time, what we saw was an operator who had a different kind of business going there, kind of a swap meat type business, who basically, because of complaints of that, changed to a recycling business. And a lot of the issues that were brought about were not because of the operator, as much as because of the business itself, the people who come to the business and what they do, not necessarily at the business, but what they do in the areas that surround the business. And that, I think, we all face wherever we have recycling centers. And so the committee felt that, or at least ultimately voted that, it wasn't necessarily that you had a bad operator as much as a business that basically created a nuisance because of the type of business and the location it was at. And that's why we felt that, one, it should be more in an industrial area. Two, we were requesting that the Council Office work with the business owner in trying to relocate them to an industrial area. And we agreed wholeheartedly with the Council Office that that might not be the proper location for that kind of operation because of the kinds of nuisances that might come about with it because of it. Part of my mixed feelings, and again, I'll be real upfront when I say them, is people are trying to figure out how to make an honest dollar. They're trying to figure out how to do it right. And then they deal with, the first form of government they face, which is city government, and city government says, you've got to do this, this, and this. And then when they start doing this, this, and this, we tell them that's not enough. And the reality is, that's what I think happened in this instance. I agree wholeheartedly with the Council Office that it's more appropriately in an industrial area. And if it was in my district, I'd probably be doing exactly the same thing. And I'd be working to try and relocate this business to an area that would be much more appropriate and that would allow for the residents who live in that surrounding area improve the quality of their life.
Thank you, Councilman. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Misakowski.
As the other member of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee who is here, I think Mr. Hernandez has correctly stated that this was a difficult case for the committee, but the preponderance of evidence was the fact that this site, which had been under a revocation hearing with conditions set forth, well, some of the conditions had been met. Some of the others, as verified by the zoning administrator and detailed testimony, both at the zoning administrator's hearing and the BZA, and in fact, in committee, indicated that others had not been met, and we must obtain compliance with all the conditions. And some of them that had not been met were some that were the most egregious in terms of the relationship of the business with the community, such as the non-compliance with the hours of operation being much earlier and, in fact, access to the site being provided when there wasn't appropriate management supervision. I think we also found a correlation that although the owner of the recycling center himself was trying in good faith to comply, there were others under his employ when he was not there who did not maintain the conditions appropriately. And I think some of the most significant testimony, in addition to that, which was what we heard today from some of the residents in terms of real intense invasive activity at their own homes nearby by people who were directly correlated to the recycling center, was from the LAPD, both the senior lead and the captain there, who indicated that there was a strong correlation when they were there on being able to monitor of people committing acts of violence and trespass and other criminal activity in the nearby neighborhood directly correlated to this site. And so it was with that body of evidence that the committee did recommend that we deny the appeal, but also offer some assistance by the Building and Safety Department to find a more appropriate site for this owner. This owner is renting the property, is not an owner. And therefore, we also requested as part of this action, Building and Safety revoke within sixty days the operation after affording the opportunity of looking for a reasonable relocation. So I ask that the council adopt the Planning and Land Use Management Committee report.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg. Okay. Okay. Is there any other council member that wishes to speak on item number one? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number one and tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fourth with, and with thanks to the community members who have been here working on this for a long time.
Very good. Next item.
Item sixty-nine, call special by Councilmember Chick.
Councilwoman Chick. While we hold this on the desk for a moment. Okay, here we go. Item number sixty-nine, Councilwoman Chick.
Yes, I'm very supportive of my colleague, Councilmember Pacheco's motion. I wanted to ask, I noticed it's being sent to CED Committee and Public Safety Committee. And in past years, the LLBEG funds, Law Enforcement Block Grant Dollars, were both larger in amount and were dispersed to entities other than the LAPD, although LAPD appropriately always got the bulk of the money. But colleagues, in the past, and with federal government's approval, we very much found a link between domestic violence shelters and services and crime prevention and law enforcement, and managed to allocate a very small amount, but very important, to domestic violence programs of those funds. So I'm hopeful that we can do so again, which is Mr. Pacheco's intent. But I would like to ask that in the committee's perusal of this motion, that there's more of an accounting and line item discussion of that, I think, ten million dollar figure. I know in the past, very often, the LAPD does have surplus money. They're not able to spend all of the amounts as they had originally planned. And I think that domestic violence services in our city are sorely in need of expansion. It's one of the most common and dangerous calls for our LAPD officers is to go out on domestic violence disputes. And our agencies in the city that are working at helping victims of domestic violence, I think, contribute greatly to the increased safety of our city and our police officers. So I look to my colleagues who chair those committees and to all of us to, where there's a will, there's a way. We've got to find the money, and hopefully, this is the appropriate place. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Misakowski.
I just wanted to affirm what Ms. Chick said and also indicate that, actually, this is rather timely because it's next week that we have the meeting with the county on the local law enforcement block grant funds, which are jointly given to the county and the city. And it's important to take motions like this back to them so that we can look for the innovative programs. Although the bulk of the funds do go to the law enforcement community directly for staffing and equipment costs, we've got to look to create and carve out as much of these funding funds available for some of the innovative programs that really help to solve in the inter-agency areas like domestic violence, like the drug courts, like bridges and everything else that we can utilize, and both with our Community and Economic Development Committee and other block grant money, we've got to use these law enforcement block grant funds in as an innovative a manner as possible.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
Members of the council, when I saw this motion, I didn't have any problem concurring with it, simply because I know there's been a difficulty by staff to get out the RFP for domestic violence program dollars for shelters that are coming online. And as that happens, what ends up happening is we're still using some of the current funding to fund the programs that are already in place. And there's a reduction of funding available for the new RFP. And so this would basically supplement that because we had to extend the deadline for that RFP by about thirty days, and I think it impacted funding by about a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. So this would help fill that gap. I think it's also important to identify the role of the council in regards to the spending of block grant, whether it be law enforcement block grant or basically the criminal justice block grant. Because as those dollars are allocated for purposes of equipment and police officers, it might not necessarily be the priority of the council. When I say that, what makes the criminal justice block grant a little bit different is it takes concurrence between the county and the city as to how to spend it. And the previous mode of operation is, we let the county decide how to spend their money and don't get in the way of how we spend our money. Well, when you talk about things like the CLEAR task force, basically, it's an inter-agency task force that includes the district attorney's office, the probation office, and LAPD. Well, when we talk about Bridges and Bridges Two and the relationship between the probation officers, the district attorneys, the city attorney, and LAPD, the natural source of funding tends to be the criminal justice block grant. But the way we've approached it has been, well, we've already allocated that money. And I think that CLEAR did not exist, and it's an important tool, but there might be funding mechanisms for that and association with our whole community youth gang intervention program. And it should be looked at through fresh eyes, but also with eyes that allow us to partner that funding in terms of probation, the district attorney, with the city's resources so that we have a more comprehensive approach to this issue. And I think that's part of how that funding's set up. The same thing applies for domestic violence. And so leveraging these dollars is important. I didn't have a problem with the motion when I saw it. And again, I just wanted to remind our colleagues of our role in setting some of those priorities and how it is that we can make a difference.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on item number sixty-nine, which is before us? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number sixty-nine and tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved. Fourth with on that item. Next item.
This is the time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
Very good. I do have a speaker's card, Mr. Ted Hayes. Mr. Hayes, sir.
Good morning, President Savonovich and council members. I'm Ted Hayes, homeless activist with Justiceville Homeless USA. If I can just take a couple of minutes of your time, you've all received some documentation from me concerning some new sweeps, street sweeps of homeless encampments in Los Angeles. About two weeks ago, on September the fifth in the morning, some LAPD officers along with some sheriff officers following the sanitation department, the Bureau of Sanitation and Street Use to an encampment located on an industry way between Sixth and Seventh Street and Central and Alvarado. And they proceeded to remove these people's belongings. They threw them in the garbage. People said, please don't do that. They ignored them. And what I discovered was that the cleanup crew did not follow the policies that was enacted by the city council back in nineteen eighty-eight when a similar incident happened here. The Bureau of Street Maintenance was supposed to have gone out and alerted these street residents, was supposed to have posted that a cleanup crew was coming through and tents and lean-to's and boxes would be removed. They were supposed to have contacted all the social service agencies to go out there and see to it that these people had options, at least as a courtesy. They were supposed to have gone to the LA Home and Service Authority, who was supposed to be over all these issues and provide them with photos and information. And then LA Home and Service Authority was supposed to have signed off on that. None of these things happened. These people's civil and constitutional rights were blatantly violated. When we went to talk with the Bureau of Street Maintenance and Licenses, they said that if we have any kind of claims to what happened out there that day, that we are supposed to take it to the Sheriff's Department. And in my understanding of the policies, the Sheriff's Department has nothing to do that, even though they were out of their jurisdiction performing this operation. From what I can gather, this responsibility lies with the Public Works Department and the bureaus of sanitation and street inspections. I have tried talking with the mayor's office concerning not only this situation, but the whole situation that has gotten out of hand in downtown Los Angeles. The thing that we feared before the convention was that there would be sweeps of these encampments and undue pressure upon homeless people for the Democrats' party. What we feared did not happen. Even the vice president's wife, Ms. Gore, expressed concern. We did not have that happen pre-convention. However, it did happen post-convention, and it is going on as we speak now. In order to get the mayor's attention, we are planning tonight a demonstration. We wanted you to know this at city council because, three years ago, you passed a resolution recognizing the problem that we're facing in this town. You passed a resolution calling on the President of the United States to enact an executive order to eradicate homelessness beginning here in Los Angeles because of the constant constitutional violations that the city is committing in relating to homeless people and their encampments. And also the undue pressure that is upon the merchants in downtown Los Angeles, whether in Central City East or Central City, by the presence of these people. And I know that you're supportive, and you don't want to see this kind of thing happening. However, we do need some sort of emergency crisis meeting with the mayor to change this. But because we're not getting any attention, I'm going to have to resort to a demonstration tonight. We're going to hold the candlelight vigil on Los Angeles Street, right where the cardboard boxes are. In the morning, we're going to walk with our shopping carts over to the LA Library. And on Fifth Street in front of the LA Library, Mr. President, we are going to set up an encampment. And we're going to wait for the LAPD to come and see how long it would take for the library to call. When they come, after a couple of mornings, because we don't want the LAPD involved in this action of arresting us, we're going to walk down to the federal building, and we're going to camp our encampment on the front lawn of the US Courthouse on Main Street. And we're going to have the federal police arrest us because this is a federal issue because we believe that the city of Los Angeles, the county of Los Angeles, cannot and should not by itself handle this problem in Los Angeles. But we must have a federal plan enacted by an executive order. I don't know how far it'll go tomorrow. I'm hoping that you will intervene in this situation, that you will call upon the mayor today. Maybe Sidney Misakowski, maybe you're the chairperson of the Safety Committee. Maybe you can call the mayor and say, look, we've got to put an end to this thing. you can call the mayor and say, look, we've got to put an end to this thing. This has gone on too long. I mean, look, folks, on Los Angeles Street and east of there, homeless people are violating the law every day. We're forced into civil disobedience, we're sleeping in boxes. These, this is against public safety, against the Building and Safety Codes. We allow that, yet up by the library, if any homeless person, including myself, go up there and set up an encampment for the library, we will be arrested. This is either one city in one country or it's not. Why is the law good up by the LA Library to be enforced, and the law is not good down on Los Angeles Street in the Skid Row area? One is Los Angeles, and one is another town, another country? No, I thought the Constitution of the United States says that we have equal justice under the law for all. Is it because we enforce the law there, is it because we realize we cannot solve the problem on Skid Row? Or can we solve it? I believe we can solve it, but we need federal assistance. So I want you to know that this demonstration is not against you, Los Angeles City Council. I made that truth three years ago, I'm going to stick by it. It is not against the Los Angeles Police Department. It is not against the city of LA or the state of California because all of you have passed resolutions calling on the President for a national plan. I believe we have it in our country right now, the power to fix this problem in this city and across the country. Please stand with us, just wanted to let you know what was going on. If you can do something, let us know today, please. Thank you very much, Mr. Savonovich and council.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Do we have any other cards for public comment? I don't believe we have any here. Madam Clerk, I don't believe you have any either, so the public hearing for public comment is closed. Next item.
Before going into closed session, Mr. President, do you wish to clear the desk?
Okay.
Uh, motions for posting and referral.
Without objection, so ordered.
That clears the desk for closed session.
Okay, we are now going to be going into executive session. I would like to ask those persons in the audience who do not have business in regards to the executive session if they could please excuse themselves, and we will prepare the council chambers for executive session. Okay, here we are, we are back live. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a series of closed session items by which we need to take votes in public.
The first item is item 40B, it's settlement in business tax claims against Samuel Bachner, Martin Levine, and related entities, and the amount is $145,000, and that's for the city to accept payment.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on that item and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
That item is approved, forthwith. Next item.
Item 40C is settlement in the amount of $210,000 in the case of Marie T. Young versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on that item and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Next item.
Item 40D is settlement in the case of Rachel Benshiman versus City of Los Angeles in the amount of $152,500.
Would you open the roll on that item, tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
That item is approved also, forthwith. Next.
Item 73A is settlement in the amount of $22,500 in the case of Ian Gervitz versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay, open the roll on item 73A and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Final item, 73B.
73B, judgment payment in the amount of $127,567.30 in the case of Richard Joris versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay, would you open the roll on that item and tabulate the vote?
Nine ayes, one no.
Nine ayes, one no on that item. That item is approved forthwith. Next item, Madam Clerk.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay, do we have any motions, any adjourning motions? Would everyone please rise for adjourning motions?
Mr. President, I move that we adjourn in memory of Mrs. Sam Rench, the wife of the IOC president, who passed away.
All members. Mr. Holden?
I move that we adjourn in memory of Tanita King-Rensen. She's the daughter of Celeste King, and is well-known community leader, Celeste King. She was a young lady in early 50s, and she had a battle with stomach cancer and just passed away the 17th of September. In recent years, Tanita, who was called Toni, when she was a teenager, worked with her father at this bail bond agency, is also active in the campus beautification program at Dulce High School. She'll be missed by all who came in contact with her, she was very popular. Today, you can view her body from 12 to 9. The funeral will be take place tomorrow at the Angeles Funeral Home, 3875 South Quinshoe Boulevard. Her parents, she survived by her parents, Brigadier General Celeste King and his wife, Anita King. Two daughters, Taii and Tiana, one sister and two brothers.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Hernandez?
Mr. President, members of council, I also want to second the motion by Mr. Holden regarding Toni King. This is the first I heard about it. I had the pleasure of working with her back in 1978, '79, '80, '81, when I was also in the bail bond business with my mom. And Celeste King is kind of a leader in the industry as well as in the community, but I remember when I was trying to figure out better systems for managing the business, and they had been an agency that had been around for a long time. Papa King was also a legend, Celeste's father. And I went over, and Toni just opened up the books, something that's very rare in the industry, that's very competitive. And she just showed me their forms and wanted me to understand their systems so that I could adopt some of them, and it was the beginning of a very strong relationship. But Celeste entrusted his daughter to share that information with us, and I'm sorry to hear that she passed away, and I feel for the King family.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Others?
I'd like to be second on the one for Celeste King's daughter.
On behalf of Council President Protam Ruth Galanter, I would like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Meredith McRae, known to many for her role in the television programs My Three Sons and Petticoat Junction. She served as president of the trusteeship from 1997 to 1999. She won an Emmy Award for her excellence as an actress, producer, and television host. She also produced PBS specials tackling women's issues, medical problems, and the aging in America. She dedicated much of her time to such organizations as Women in Film, the Children's, Bern Foundation, and the American Heart Association, just to name a few, and has survived by her husband, Phil, and daughter Allison. I think it would be appropriate for all members. Second by Councilwoman Goldberg. Also--
Mr. Chair, I thought we had done that one already, some time ago.
We may have, but at the request of the Council President Protam. Also, I do not believe that we adjourn in memory of former state legislator and Judge Robert S. Stevens. Passed away on September 9th in 1962. He first ran for the 60th Assembly District and served four years in the State Assembly. Later in 1966, he won one of the 13 additional state senate seats that were granted to LA County under a court-ordered reapportionment. He represented the coastal 25th State Senate District from Malibu for Palisverdes for dozens of years. He has survived by his wife, Marjorie Turner-Stevens, sons Gary and Thomas, seven grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren.
I'd like to be second on that. Just comment that I had the pleasure, privilege of serving with Bob Senator Stevens in the State Senate. He's a wonderful guy, did a lot to help the city and kind of Los Angeles. When we needed a vote, we could always count on Bob to deliver. In fact, we had such a relationship between both sides of the aisle that there are certain members in the opposite party was not put on a hit list. I mean, one was not fighting the other. In fact, they all worked together, and Bob was one such a guy, he and Beverly and all, where we worked during campaigns together and after campaigns and in the legislature. I'm sure Ms. Goldberg will find that work, would you get up there sometime, that some of the demos give you a rougher time. And Bob was a Republican, but he really worked with us.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. I would like to ask to adjourn in memory of Johnny Ivanisevich, who passed away September 16th. He was born on May 2nd, 1929, in San Pedro and was a lifetime resident. He is survived by a loving family. Also that we adjourn in memory of Dennis McClintock, who passed away September 16th at the age of 60. Mr. McClintock was a 41-year resident of San Pedro and recently relocated to Murrieta. He is survived by his wife, Vargo, son Scott, and wife Kelly, daughter Shannon, and husband John, brothers and numerous family members. Dennis was a neighbor who lived right behind me since 1970 and was a senior inspector for the city's Department of Building and Safety for more than 30 years, and passed away to a very sudden illness, had just sold his home and retired in February.
Man.
And I would like to ask that we adjourn in his memory. He was truly a wonderful city employee and a wonderful neighbor. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
We adjourned yesterday in memory of the police officer who was killed.
Yes.
And did you decide when his funeral is going to be?
Services are pending.
Oh, pending. All right. Thank you.
Sorry to hear about Toni.
Seeing no further business, the council is adjourned.